Its inclusion in our program.
But if, go ahead.
Go ahead, Eugene.
If some of the AD ramps are already in, which we have, some of these streets were done already, and they would just put them in, will that be part of this, even though we already put them in? It's that red ones, am I correct? I just want to verify that.
Yeah, we'll have to review them and make sure they meet today's current standard. If they do, then they're allowed to stay in. But if they don't, even if they're red and they have the raised detectable warnings on them, but they're not built exactly right, we will have to replace them because these are federal funds and the project needs to be ADA compliant when it's done. So we do need to verify each of those ramps to make sure they're done correctly to today, to the current standards.
So we're going, I'm sorry.
God, you.
So are we paying 100% of the engineering part and the other part is a 70% grant?
That's correct, and that's per the rules of DuPage County's STP program.
So then we still have to come up with 30% for this project?
That's correct.
And what was the 30% of this project?
It's approximately...
$65,000?
Uh, no, uh, 65,000 is for the design engineering. It's 100% of the design engineering. And then the city's share of construction and construction engineering would be approximately $300,000.
Okay, because I don't see that in a memo on how much our cost share was.
That, and that would be programmed in a future fiscal year. It would, it's not in the budget for this year. It's just the engineering was put in the budget for this year.
So these aren't being installed this year?
No, sir.
Just the design?
It's going to be designed this year.
Oh, okay.
And we're going to shoot for a January state bid letting down in Springfield and probably constructed April, May of next year.
Is there a deadline when this has to be completed with the grant?
Uh, no, actually, you've got an additional year, but the thought was to try to expedite the project through the county and try to get the improvements built next year was, was the goal.
And Minute Maker, I'd like you to show that Alderman Winger is now in attendance. Okay, also, I have a question on the list of the sidewalks that you have.
Yes.
It might have been a typo here, but A and I, both say Wooddale Road at Murray Drive.
Is that? It was a typo.
That was a typo.
That's correct.
Okay.
Just, just one intersection.
Right, gotcha, all right, thank you. Alderman Winger?
So as you're checking each of the listed items for the ones that are completed and if they're under compliance, let's say that four out of them are, I'm going to expect the cost to be much less than the $65,000. Would, would you agree with that?
Go ahead.
So the design costs would then come down if we didn't have to design a replacement? Yeah, I would think so, sure.
Okay, so, so this is like costed out if you had to design all items?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Alderman Woods?
Could we, as we discussed before, one of those crosswalks are going to be at Addison Road by Potter. So if we were taking one off the Wooddale Road section, could we then just add another one on Potter to hit the other side of the school?
Go ahead.
Well, we, it's at the same location, so I think the state wouldn't be okay with that, and the county, it's just a question to make sure we can get it done within the budget that we've prescribed. Now, we did a preliminary budget to put the application in. I haven't done any detailed design, I haven't done any design on this job yet at all. But once we get into the design, if we find that there's money available, then we could, we could perhaps go ahead and do that, as long as it's in the same location that was put in the grant application.
Right, well, I just wanted, if we could use the dollars, I would like, I mean, that was one of the locations I would have liked to see more done around Westview. This is something that we talked about at Streetscape and kind of city staff was working on this grant with you guys, and we kind of didn't really get to talk, so I'd like to maximize the benefit we can achieve.
Yes, sir.
From that grant and your, your design work.
You're not tied to a number of crosswalks, just the total dollar amount and, and the approximate location of what we put in the grant application.
Okay, any other questions? Alderman Roy Wesley?
Um, I guess this question is to Jeff. Is Baxman Woodman, I mean, how he was saying is with the county. Did we go out for bid on this, or how did Baxman Woodman come into this?
Jeff?
Um, Baxman Woodman works with staff on the DuPage Mayors and Managers Trans-Tech Committee. The Trans-Tech Committee then issues or, you know, categorizes the projects, ranks them on a scale, and then makes recommendations to the full board of DMMC, and then those, those monies get let. Baxman Woodman helps us on that committee with their engineering expertise. They've been on that committee with us for a number of years now. So they really headed up the grant process together with staff on this project, and being a professional services just for design, doesn't have to go out for bid. When we do the construction, that's when we would go out for bid for the project.
Well, we have other...
Are there any other questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Alderman.
We have, so it was through mayors and managers?
Yeah.
Okay. I, one more thing here, I was looking through this here, and it says a mileage of $180. What, what's with the mileage?
Go ahead.
I'll defer to Mr. House.
I understand hourly, but then you're going to hit us with, I'll give you a bicycle.
Understood, well, that's just an allotment. If, if we don't need to spend it, we won't need to spend it. We don't typically charge the city mileage for our work over here, so I don't think it'll be a problem.
I didn't understand that.
Yeah, sorry about that. I didn't put this one together.
Alderman Jacob?
Just a question, how were these locations chosen? Was that something that Streetscape worked on, or is that something?
Yes, I received the locations from city staff, I believe through the Streetscape Committee. That was given to me about, about a year ago in August.
Any other questions? Uh, I'd like to do a roll call because of the price, please.
What's the motion?
We did.
What's the motion? To accept the, um...
Yeah.
Could you repeat the motion, please?
Minute taker, can you repeat the motion, please?
You just made the motion to approve.
No dollar amount?
Yes, $65,000, not to exceed $65,000.
That's the thing, it wasn't a motion, I just want to make sure the dollar amounts.
Yeah, not to exceed in...
That's fine.
The second? You concur?
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
And that passes. Okay, let's see, report and recommendation, consideration of COMED converting above-ground cable at the intersection of Wooddale Road and Irving Park Road. Who would like to take the lead on this? Rich?
I'll take the lead, just to introduce the topic while Mr. Hogan prepares here. Several weeks ago, maybe, maybe a month ago, HR Green and, and I had met with COMED to discuss the potential for taking above-ground cabling around, along Irving Park and, and Wooddale Road corridor and, and converting it to a below-ground electric infrastructure. And tonight, you're going to hear the findings of that discussion that we had with them. And while we had HR Green here, we thought it would be a good opportunity for us to share just a brief update of where that project stands to date. So with, with that, I'd like to introduce Dennis Hogan of HR Green to further the conversation here tonight.
Okay, Dennis?
Good evening, everyone. I'm the project manager with HR Green overseeing the Illinois 19 at Wooddale Road project. We're currently working on preliminary plans at this intersection. As Rich had mentioned, we've met with COMED in February and then recently in May as part of our scope of work for our design. The city was interested in at least evaluating the possibility of converting the overhead utilities within the intersection to underground. Based on that, we met with COMED, we had a couple of meetings, we had a concept plan provided to us as far as, at a high level, as far as what they envisioned with the project, and that's something I'm going to go through with my slide present, presentation. So as far as the project goes, as far as status, like Rich mentioned, we're currently working on our preliminary plans. We have Parsons Brinkerhoff that's currently under our contract that's doing the railroad improvements and gate improvements. In May, we met with Metra, the ICC, and IDOT out on the site to scope the railroad improvements and what would be needed at the intersection from a railroad standpoint. And so we're moving ahead with our design. We're approximately 48% complete with our project as far as percent complete and dollars spent to date. The plan is to submit pre-final plans to IDOT in December, and we're still targeting a spring 2014 letting for construction. The one thing that always comes into play with any project, though, with IDOT is obviously the right-of-way acquisition. We have, as of May 1st, we have our right-of-way appraisals and negotiators on board. They will be beginning the process as far as appraising the land and so on. But the right-of-way is always an issue that you want to expedite and so on, but if the right-of-way is not clear in time for the letting, then the letting gets delayed. But currently, we're on track to meet a spring 2014 letting. So the scope of work for the project, for some of you who aren't familiar with it, to lead into the presentation with COMED, the scope of work of the intersection, and I've got an aerial exhibit that I'll show as far as the actual project, so it's, would be a little bit helpful to understand what this is. But this is just a bullet point list as far as what the project consists of, and it consists of intersection reconstruction, the addition of southbound, eastbound right turn lanes at the intersection, water main is currently being designed as part of the federal and state funds that are for the design engineering for this project. Realignment of Commercial Street in order to, the current Commercial Street is going to be converted into a right turn in, right turn out on the east side, and the west side is going to be converted, or essentially shifted to the north approximately 500 feet. The reason why that's being done is because the barrier median to the north is being extended and so on to prohibit left turn movements and so on near Commercial Street. New traffic signals are being installed as part of the improvement. They will be interconnected with the current system along Irving Park Road. They will be stated hour traffic signals, the controllers will be, so when the gates are down, one of the big sticking points right now is when the gates are down, the northbound to left, left turn movement is prohibited because the signals are all red. The new traffic signal controllers and so on, when the gates are down, will allow for that northbound to westbound left turn movement, which I know is a concern with the city and the residents as far as the capacity of that intersection. I already mentioned the railroad signals and gates are being designed by Parsons Brinkerhoff as part of this project. They're currently working aggressively with Metra to design what they need to for the railroad improvements. And then evaluating bearing overhead utilities, this is something by no means that HR Green or anyone is recommending to do, and when we talk about the cost and so on, we're not suggesting the city move ahead on it. The purpose of this is to at least explore what is involved with bearing utilities and the costs associated with it, and let the city and council make the decision if they want to proceed to the next step with this, so.
Thank you, any questions?
Well, I still have...
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I still have some slides that I'm going to go through.
All right, go ahead.
Just briefly as far as with the utilities, I mean...
Mike, can you, you want to ask a question, Mike?
The only thing I had a pro, you talk about bearing these lines, we're starting in 2014. How far down the road is the, the state from doing 19, around 19? Would they have to dig up all those utilities again?
No, I think what, excuse me, when I go through the presentation and with COMED, obviously COMED, it's a big investment for the city and for COMED to bury their utilities. The biggest concern with utilities is relocating more than once with a future roadway improvement. So as part of this presentation, there's a section of the intersection that COMED is recommending for a permanent easement to put their underground utilities, so that way in a, in the future, if IDOT or the county does an improvement and they wind and they need the right-of-way, then it's their responsibility for the cost to relocate the utilities. So I'll be more than happy to answer more questions. I'll just go through here as far as the main, why do people, or why, why do we bury utilities? Primary reasons for burying utilities, reliability, aesthetics, and fewer injuries than overhead lines. The major causes for power outages, obviously, are fallen trees, snow, ice, and high winds. One of the biggest obstacles of burying utilities is the cost, though. So in general, it's, it's generally 10 to 15 times the amount to bury utilities than stringing them on poles. In meeting with COMED, the responsibility to bury utilities is generally 100% the locals' cost. As an option to burying utilities, if the city doesn't have the funds available, an option that COMED has mentioned that sometimes the costs are deflected to the residents. So bottom line is how much extra to pay to, to not sit in the dark. So this is essentially the concept plan that COMED presented to us. I'm going to just briefly get out of the presentation, show you the file. This is an aerial image of the intersection, and essentially what we asked COMED to do is the legend regarding as far as what the lines represent, but starting on the east leg of Irving Park and working towards Wooddale Road, the orange line, if you can see it here, represents the existing overhead lines, okay? So you've got existing overhead line here running parallel to 19 here. The other major as far as existing overhead line runs north to south on Wooddale Road. You can see on the south leg of Wooddale Road, the orange line here, running down. And essentially what we asked COMED to do is, and there's another section of line over here on the west leg of 19. So COMED met with us, and they came back with us in May, and came up with a plan in green which represents what they would do at a concept level for essentially eliminating the orange line, and they came up with the green line. So the green line represents some overhead, and then the E is where they would bury the electric in the back here, and then put some overhead in the back alley. But essentially, you can see the green line is where they would bury at a concept level what they came up with for where they would put the existing underground. One thing to note here on Wooddale Road, there's a yellow line here. It's a little hard to see, but it, there's a 10-foot easement here that they're recommending, and they, the 10-foot easement would be from the back of the existing right-of-way to the private property to bury their utilities in. And the advantage, like I mentioned before, is the right-of-way is tight along Wooddale. The reason why they would do that is obviously in a future improvement or widening of Wooddale Road, if the county needs right-of-way, they have the easement there with the utilities underground. The county would then be responsible for paying for the relocation of the underground utility. So that's just briefly as far as what COMED came together as far as a plan, and they presented it to Rich and myself. But going back to the cost and the project, they came up again with a planning cost of $2.5 million, and the cost does not include the permanent easement, service revision work to businesses, or burying any additional utilities that may be attached to COMED's poles such as phone and cable. So, um... So the schedule with the, with this plan, because I already mentioned our pre-final plans are due December, one of the questions might be, well, what is the turnaround? If, if the city did pursue this, how long would it take COMED to go ahead and do this? We would try to provide them with an advanced set of plans so they could design accordingly, but they need 16 to 18 weeks for their design. There would be an engineering report as far as that they would go and prepare an engineering report. I talk about that in this next slide. The, the next step really in this whole process is really to give this pursuit a go or no go, you know, based on the cost and the information I'm presenting to you, because to go to the next step with COMED and have them prepare an engineering report and have another fee to the city to go through that effort, it, it's probably not worth it. So I've just presented as far as to you, as far as what information we received from COMED, and it's just open for discussion as far as how the council wants to proceed.
Rich, for this $2.5 million, how many feet are we actually talking about burying?
Uh, you know, we haven't done a takeoff to determine how, how much that is, but maybe Dennis can speak to the parameters of the project, so what the length of Wooddale and what the length of Irving Park would be.
Go ahead.
You know, the, the question was asked because Rich and I both wanted, we asked the question is, how much of that $2.5 million can you put a, a unit price per foot or something for the relocation? And they said at one time they used to do that, but for now, they don't normally do that. So just based on the existing overhead within the intersection units, intersection limits, and the green lines that I represented to, put everything back in order so everything functions properly, you know, with, with the current connections, they, they were reluctant to put a unit price per foot on that. So, so unfortunately, I can't answer that question. I could certainly take a measurement of the existing overhead and say, hey, you got this much overhead, COMED came up with $2.5 million, convert it to a unit price per foot, if that would be helpful.
It, it would. How did they come up with the 2.5?
They must, when, you know, with what they have to bury underground, again, it's a, a planning cost, and then the, the next step, as I mentioned, because we asked what would be the next question, would be a more detailed engineering report. I was just trying to think if COMED has these requests from municipalities all the time, and they spend this free engineering to kind of look at the concept, come up with the cost, and wonder how many municipalities actually proceed forward. So to spend any more effort and to define the cost even closer, I think they're talking about this detailed engineering report to refine those details that you're looking at.
Okay, thanks. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I have a couple, a couple of questions. So it's $2.5 million, okay? What did COMED tell you what it would cost for a citizen to pay into this project if we decide burying?
That I...
It is not here in the memo.
No, I, I, that was a question I was expecting. I asked the question, you know, that's, their external affairs department would have to get involved to obtain that information, they said, and then if the city did decide to pass on that cost to the residents, they said the city would have to pass an ordinance for this, would, to, this to happen. This would fall under what is known as the rider LGC, local government, compliance.
Okay. I have a follow-up.
All right, go ahead.
But, but Jeff wants to add to that one.
Jeff?
Yeah, unofficially, I, I did some, I had some discussions with COMED, and, and something of this magnitude, in the past, there's been payment plans, we're talking 20, 25 years, we're talking cents added on to residents' utility bills, you know, five cents maybe per month for 25 years, something to that effect. You know, we're not talking about, you know, getting this done in five years, you know, 500 bucks to everybody's bill. They seem to spread it out over, you know, 20 to 25 years in cents.
I don't know if you know this answer yet, but on that five cents per month, can they ever raise that?
Again, I didn't get into great detail with this because we wanted to see if the council was, was interested in proceeding. I don't have an exact answer on that.
Yeah, okay.
I have a...
Go ahead, Eugene.
My, my follow-up with this is, looking at $2.5 million, you're looking at adding their engineer costs to put this together because they aren't going to put this together, so you're probably looking at probably, I would say probably $60,000, $70,000 for their engineer, I don't know, but I'm throwing those numbers out because we just approved a $65,000, $65,000 engineer for a sidewalk, so this is more detail. So we're looking at, my opinion, $2.5 million to delay this project anymore with that construction project that we have delayed, delayed, delayed for several years, and these people are looking forward to making that turn lane without a debate, and we talked about this project, and, and we need to move forward with this project to delay it 18 more weeks, and you, we know how COMED move on projects. When we lose power in this town, it takes them forever to come back out and put power back up. So my recommendation is, at this time, we do not move forward with this at all for $2.5 million and some change.
Alderman Woods?
Couple of questions. So in fact, if we wanted to move forward and say, let me start with number one, do we know what they were requesting for engineering?
They threw out a number of $30,000 for an engineering report. And I, I'm anticipating with that engineering report, they talk about as far as the option, as far as deflecting the cost to residents, and like Jeff talked about, the term and the 20 years and so on, they would have a better feeling for that.
All right, so the second thing, in fact, would, if we proceed with this, you know, have them do the engineering, is this going to hold up that intersection improvement for 18 to 20 weeks? Or could this go on simultaneously? You're giving them the engineering for the intersection, knowing that we really want to move forward, if nothing else, at least bury what's within the parameters of the intersection study while we wait for the, or the intersection improvement, while we wait for the rest of it.
I tried to, I asked the question for the timeframe, if, if the city decided to move forward on this the same timeframe, too. If we somehow got the green light to proceed with this engineering report, how long it would take to do that? They said 10 to 12 weeks. After that, they would then take a minimum of, I believe, 18 weeks or so on to do the design for the, for the underground. What HR Green would do is provide them with an advanced copy of the pre-final plans, so they have a copy of our plans, they know where our water main and where our storm sewer obviously is going and so on. So that's the reason why we're doing this early on in the design, to come up with a decision, yes or no, because we want to make it work within the timeframe with the roadway improvement, and ideally with any roadway improvement, you want the utilities to be out of the way before the roadway contractor gets on site. So if you back into the 18 and 10 weeks and so on, and before they even put a shovel in the ground to start the relocation, and that's also dependent on storms during the summer where some people get pulled off, and that gets delayed and so on as part of their design process. So right now, I feel if this, if we do proceed, the timing would work out, but you want to know early on whether or not you're going to go ahead or not, because utilities and so on, they like to have enough time to relocate and design and so on.
So to make this work and to keep the disruption or, ah, expanding this project's timeframe, if, if we get them to move forward, approve the $30,000, they get the engineering to be able to answer all the questions like Alderman Lazara, Alderman Wesley, and everybody has, which we can't answer today, your feeling is that we can still keep this road project as much as we're able to call it on track, you know, obviously barring, you know, weather and other incidents?
I, I feel like we could keep the project on track. I mean, with any roadway improvement, you have utility owners working with the roadway contractor as far as the mains of traffic, you know, you like to think that utilities would be relocated before the roadway contractor gets in, but the factor matter, that doesn't happen. Usually, the roadway contractor is dealing with utilities when they want to get out and excavate and so on. But the more lead time we provide for COMED to design, the better off we would be. Now, this engineering report, you know, I don't think after, you know, do you want to spend $30,000 and then pull the plug and say, you know what, the costs are refined and so on, we know what we're dealing with? This doesn't include the acquisition of the permanent easement that they want on the south leg of Wooddale Road, which again, once you throw right-of-way into the mix, as far as that's another additional cost, and then how would the residents that would be approached for that 10-foot easement view giving that easement up to COMED? That's another issue you have to be aware of. The right-of-way acquisition is a long process, so you want to keep that in mind, too. So that's another reason why if we want to move forward or... So that's another reason why if we want to move forward, or the city wants to move forward, the earlier the better.
Well, two things, earlier the better, and if we don't do it now, which everybody has wanted to do this, it will not get done. We're not going to go after we do the intersection, replace the water main, come and dig it back up to redo it.
That's right.
I think everybody would have to at least agree with that. So the big question is today, do we want to take the next step to move forward? I mean, I understand Alderman Eugene Wesley's concerns of pushing the project, you know, down the road more, and I don't want to do that, but this is something that we've all talked about and all kind of fought for. We've put it in our strategic plan, you know, and we're now at that crossroad, no pun intended, to do something. So I would say, I think that we at least need to take that next step to be able to answer all those questions and move forward on this. Otherwise, we're just purely not going to do it ever.
Right, that's right.
Matter of fact, I'll make a motion to move forward with whatever it is we need to do to take it to the next step.
Do I have a second on that?
Well, this is what we're going to get. This is the information part of it. Right now, we have a ballpark by ComEd. I do buildings, so ComEd comes to me, and they tell me roughly it's going to be $3,500 for us to engineer what you want it, you know, for my stuff. It's a lot smaller. $3,500 to engineer it. Well, when I get the, finally, they, I tell them to engineer it. I give them $3,500. They wind up giving me $1,200 back and only cost $2,500 to do the job or to engineer the job. But unfortunately, that's the way they work. So we're not going to know those hard answers until we put some skin in the game, because obviously, they don't want to engineer this whole project for, you know, us to go, okay, well, that was nice. Thanks for all the hard work, like you had nothing else to do. But we're not going to do it, so.
Alderman Winger?
Thank you. So I totally agree that if we don't do it now and really put the focus on it, we probably never will. This has been on topic for at least 10 years of kind of on the back burner and thinking about it every now and then, and then we don't do anything with it. So now is the time, if we're going to do something with the power lines, let's get it in motion. We have signage plans, Welcome of Wooddale and Prairie Designs, but you can't do that and create the image that we're looking for and have power lines overhead. It gives a whole different feel with the power lines. So by opening up the area, removing the power lines, I do believe that will be a very large improvement to the aesthetics and to our community, and then also to help with power outages and such. So one thing though, all too often, we do spend the money and for the engineering process, and then we decide not to do anything with the whole notion. So I believe the pivotal point of this is, how are we going to pay for it, it sounds like? How is the billing going to work? Can ComEd stretch it out over 25 years to get some of the details? Is that possible to get within the next week to city council so we can make a decision? Do we move forward with engineering or not? Do we know what the bottom line is to the residents? If it's over 25 years, then it might be a minimal impact to the residents, but a much larger improvement overall to the community and to the service to the residents regarding electricity. So how quickly can we get the impact, financial impact to the residents regarding how we're going to pay it?
All right, Dennis.
Well, the gentleman we've been meeting with with ComEd has been very responsive. He's returned emails, phone calls, and so on. I know he's probably got a lot on his plate. He indicates that he would have to check with his external affairs department. Maybe he'd be able to kind of share that information before, you know, going into a detailed engineering report. I can certainly follow up with him and see that the city is somewhat interested in moving forward, but they're interested to see what the cost would be if it was deflected to the residents based on that $2.5 million planning cost and the term and so on.
Yeah, the other thing that I would like to see is, for $2.5 million, what are we getting? You know, I mean, how many feet are we burying? And, you know, I mean, there's just so many unanswered questions. We have this $2.5 million in front of us. I like the idea. I don't like the money. So before I say yes, I sure would like to see if they could give us a breakdown on what we're getting for our money. Go ahead Dennis.
And I believe the engineering report will refine that. Like I said, I think they're reluctant to come to a unit price for converting overhead to buried, but I can certainly measure the overhead and come up with my own unit price. That 2.5 million, obviously, being a planning cost, has some contingency in it, you know, to try and, you know, because it is early on in the process, the engineering process. But, you know, from a reliability standpoint and aesthetics, I understand why municipalities bury utilities. It's more pleasing. In Europe, a lot of utilities are buried because they view overhead poles as visual pollution. So, you know, the 19 and Wooddale intersection is heavily traveled and almost like the gateway into Wooddale. But at what point, you look at burying utilities at that intersection, at what point do you look at burying utilities throughout the city, you know? By this intersection, maybe this intersection is the gateway of Wooddale. Makes sense to check it, you know, do it, you know? So that's, I will certainly follow up with Gary Zach at ComEd and see what he can provide to me as far as what that $2.5 million, if it was deflected to the residents, what the rate would be in term and so on.
Okay. Alderman Jacob?
Thank you. A couple of questions. Number one, when we talk about power outages, I mean, this intersection, and maybe Rich would have to answer this, how many power outages are happening because of this intersection?
It would be difficult for me to determine that because we don't keep records of that information. ComEd potentially could give us that information should we be able to, you know, work with them on this. But I couldn't, I couldn't offer that information to you because we don't, we don't keep that data.
Go ahead Jeff.
With a little bit more institutional knowledge than Mr. Gallus, just off the top of my head, we don't have the records, but I don't think the main power lines that we're talking about burying are a lot of the problems associated with the area. They've improved upon installing some new infrastructure like trip savers, things like that for those, the residential, behind residential homes, those lines. They're the ones that typically will get, you know, hit by trees, and you know, Ward 1, Ward 4, those are problematic. So as far as outages, I think a lot of times it's those outages are caused by the residential areas, and they kind of travel throughout the system. But again, like Mr. Gallus said, it's, we're not ComEd experts, so it could help if we buried the line.
Go ahead Alderman.
I have a couple more questions. Number two, you're saying preliminary estimate is 2.5 million, but there's a lot of things that does not include. Do we have an estimate of, with everything that is not included in that number?
Dennis?
I had a slide as far as with the cost. It's, these are some items that ComEd brought to our attention at our meeting. The permanent easement, we talked about. Service revision work, burying additional utilities attached to ComEd's poles such as phone and cable. There could be, you know, as far as a common trench, whatever's attached to the poles now when they bury, whether it be Comcast or whatever cable company or AT&amp;T use a common trench to bury those utilities. But there could be a fee or whatever for those utilities to have with the city too. So I don't know enough about, until we go into the next step, because I started asking those questions of Gary Zach. You know, if they're attached to their poles and they're leasing to be part on their poles. But he did say that it would make sense, obviously, to be in a common trench when you go from overhead to underground.
But I mean, at this point, you can't say it's going to be another million dollars, another couple hundred thousand?
I can't really estimate that. I can tell you that the bulk of the cost, obviously, is the electric. You know, the cable and phone probably isn't as a big ticket price as much as electric. But, you know, those details, we're going to be coordinating with the other utility companies as part of our intersection improvement, and those questions can certainly be asked. We have a list of those utility owners now. We can follow up with them and say, hey, if you're currently attached to ComEd and they go underground, what would you charge? They may have a linear foot unit price, so we could quantify what that cost would be.
And then my final question is, when you were showing that map, if you could put the map up with the drawing with the green lines?
Sure. So is there-
I guess my question was, when you were describing it, it seemed like they were going to bury it in certain spots, but then it'd be like 100 feet underground, then it's going to be above ground? Did I misunderstand you or?
No, you understood me correctly. The majority of the lines in green with the east symbol is, and it's difficult on the screen with the lighting to see, but there is a section of line that you've got existing overhead here, and they have some underground here, but then they go back to overhead here. They, and the concern when we first met with them was, well, you're just moving the line from one area to someone else's problem to see, you know, which was a concern. So that was the only section of line that I recall that went from overhead here to overhead along here. But I think maybe they did that to try and minimize the overall costs. You know, I mean, because again, the more you bury, the more it's going to cost. But again, it's so, to know where all the connections and everything involved with ComEd's system, they had a, they spent some time putting together a concept and tried to figure out where would we stop the improvement? What do we need to tie in service-wise and so on? And this is what they gave to us at, you know, at our last meeting.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Let's do a follow-up here. So now, like he said, so what we're doing is burying some of it, but then some of it's overhead. My other question is, as council members sitting up here, are we going to do all of Irving Park Road then? You might well get a price tag for the whole entire Irving Park Road from borderline to borderline, because our border, if you're looking at the signs that was discussed, there's a borderline on, by the Dunkin' Donuts. You might well look at it all then, and that does this intersection. The other thing that causes here is, if I am mistaken, you also said there's an easement that they are going to request. Now, is that on private property or is that on the city property?
Private, the prop-
So my question there is, here's the other loophole. Okay.
Go ahead Dennis.
It's the South Lake of Wooddale from the corner here. It's hard to, the yellow line, 10-foot easement is what they're recommending along Wooddale Road, because it's, the right-of-way is currently tight to begin with. And again, there may be space currently to put under the sidewalk, but they don't want to put and invest putting under a sidewalk, and then later on, DuPage County comes down and does an improvement. More and more easements are being purchased by ComEd adjacent to IDOT right-of-way. So that way down the road, if IDOT does an improvement, they don't have to pay for it. It's IDOT's responsibility to pay for the relocation.
So as a follow-up to that question now, my question is, is that business going to agree with the easement? So we don't know that. So we're going, go ahead and put $30,000 off for engineering, and we don't know if that business is even going to agree with it. And then we not looking at, we only looking at that intersection. Well, you might well just have a, ComEd come down and give us the whole price for the whole entire Irving Park Road. The other question I have on this project is, believe me, I want to bury those cables as much as everyone else does on this council, but don't piecemeal this together. If you're going to do it, you do the whole entire Irving Park Road and find the money to do it and not piecemeal this together. Because I know what's going to happen. We're going to do this, and Mr. Woods brought it very up, and I believe Christine brought it up too, that we've been talking about this for 10 years, okay? That's a whole entire Irving Park Road. Now we're going to do this, and then 10 more years down the line, we go to, well, now we aren't going to do the other part of it? Do it all at once. Bite the bullet. If you choose to go that route, do it all. My concern is still delaying this project. If ComEd delays anything with this project. And my other question is, do they have to go back to the state and get a clearance to bury those? It's a state road, which we had due to permits to do our intersection study left and right. Do they have to get state approval to bury these cables?
If the city wants to pay to bury it, IDOT wouldn't care, IDOT shouldn't really care.
But we don't know that for sure.
Well, the main thing is that they're not in conflict with the proposed state improvement. So as a designer of a roadway project, we have utility coordination meetings. We try to avoid utilities when possible because we don't want them to relocate. If we can do a design modification with our drainage design and so on to avoid them. Avoidance is always the first goal. Now, the fact that you're going from overhead to underground, it's a request to the city, IDOT frankly wouldn't really care. They would make sure that, the schedule-wise with the contractor, they would be concerned about that because, you know, they have through their design a 90-day relocation law where ideally, when they get plans, they want them to be relocated within 90 days because they don't want delays during construction.
And that is my concern with ComEd. That is my main concern. And my main concern too is, we talked about doing this for 10, 15 years. Well, we brought the point, we buried this intersection. Well, you better look at all Irving Park Road, because that is our corridor. And you might well look at Wooddale Road too, and burying everything on Wooddale Road too if there's overheads there. So you might well bury the whole city if that's the case. Bite the bullet and do it then.
Dennis, or I don't know if anyone knows this question, but is there any grant money for something like this?
The grant money hasn't really, I can talk to see if there's grant money available. I would suspect that with the grant money for this project, that it would not be eligible. But I don't want to say for sure. I can explore that as an option. I'm sure if it was an option, a lot of municipalities would be doing that. I know for a fact, I worked on a project up in Lake Forest, Lincolnshire area, Bannock Burn. You know, there are municipalities that invest to bury utilities. Whether or not they pay that themselves or deflect the cost to residents, I don't know. But municipalities in the Chicago area do spend money to do it. You know, whether it's to, for reliability, to avoid power outages, or I would guess the Lake Forest and Bannock Burn area primarily do it because they view overhead utilities as visual pollution. They just don't want to see them.
Right. Alderman Woods?
Yeah, Dennis, could you back out of that a little bit, just so we can see what the, I want to see where those green lines start and stop, I guess is what we're looking at. So the area that you discussed with them, is that?
So the intersection improvements end right here, just east of Oak Avenue. So however their system is with this overhead line, they kind of, with this exhibit, showed that this would be gone, and then it would tie in here, I guess it's a, the green line here would be overhead, and then underground in the back, and then back to overhead here.
Right. Well, the overhead's because they already have poles and overhead going there, so they're going to add. Otherwise, we'd have to go to that and take that pole down too, which really isn't our mission. Otherwise, we could get carried away. So our goal is Irving Park and Wooddale Road, so that would still be acceptable because those poles are already existing. They're just going to add a couple wires to them.
Okay.
How far going east?
Well, it's pretty much with this exhibit, I think this is where it kind of terminates as far as the overhead. With, see, the intersection improvement, the idea here, because you can go all the way along Irving Park. The idea when we met with ComEd was to limit burying overhead utilities within our roadway reconstruction limits. And our roadway reconstruction limits essentially end just east of Oak Avenue. So since we have this line here, they would say they would get rid of that, and then they would start introducing the green underground. The main thing I see as far as overhead is along Wooddale Road, that you have north-south this line here that runs up here, you know, up towards Commercial Street here. They would go ahead and bury that, and then you have a section of overhead right here. And then you have a section of overhead right here on the north side of Irving Park that they would bury and then put the underground electric. Again, here, they're recommending a ten-foot easement from these properties here to put the underground electric.
And that's in the back along the railroad?
Right.
Okay. Alderman Zermansky.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Eugene and Alderman Woods. Um, if you can go back to that one frame that you had the picture of the intersection, the cross tracks. And just, you know, right now, we're spending money on the facade project. We're spending money on signage, as Eugene, as Alderman Winger said also. You know, I say, I say I'm, I'm in favor, seconding Alderman Woods's, uh, motion to move forward on it, but not the whole Irving Park Road yet.
Do we need a motion for this?
You still have, you still have IDOT coming through to do Irving Park reconstruction further down. We could work on something later at a later date, but to get this intersection done. And then, you know, everybody's looking to make Irving Park Road look better, more aesthetically pleasing to the eye. Wooddale and Irving, that you're doing the facade project on front and Irving, right?
So, Rich, let me clarify this. You're looking for a recommendation from council to go ahead and do the engineering for this? No, I mean, as far as a recommendation for H R Green.
I, I guess what, what we were seeking tonight was guidance from this council on whether or not we wanted to proceed. So, the natural next step would be to spend the thirty thousand dollars on doing, uh, some further engineering assessment to determine, uh, some more details for you about what the project consists of. So, I think, and I'll defer to Mayor here, but I think we were looking for that motion to, you know, give us guidance on what you wanted to do next.
So, the motion would be to spend the thirty thousand for the engineering? Alderman, uh, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Two questions. Do we know that the thirty thousand is the number for this engineering from ComEd?
Well, again, I, I'm going to follow up with Gary, but again, that was one of my questions. I said that, what, to Gary, what would be the fee for this engineering report? He responds, I would think it would be in the area of thirty thousand dollars.
Go ahead.
You know, when it comes to studies, I'm not a big fan of doing the study and then back off. In this case, I mean, I think in a few weeks here, we're going to talk about the community park, town center vision plan. And this is part of it and, and from, you know, Alderman Woods is saying, this is the time this section is being done. You know, what is going to be the cost to the residents? If you start telling me it's twenty, thirty dollars a month to the residents, I'm going to have a problem with that. Then I hear a nickel, you know, five cents. I don't want to.
Was that a question?
No, no, I'm, uh, they're talking, so I want to. So, then I hear five cents, maybe ten cents, it's a, you know, sixty cents to a dollar twenty a year. I mean, if that was the case, you know, I don't mind that. I'll buy two less cans of pop for the year and we're good. But we need, we need to find out for sure. And I guess the only way we're going to do that is to do the study. I think, you know, if we're going to do it, now's the time to do it. I, I'm with Eugene over there. We should do the whole thing, but unfortunately, you know, that's a monster project. This is right in front of us. We should tackle what's right in front of us.
Yeah, I'd like just a couple more questions and then, uh, we're going to take a vote. Alderman Woods.
Uh, just a follow-up. What the mayor said is, we have all these projects going. This is the logical thing to do, why we're doing that. I'd like to, trust me, I'd like to do all of Irving Park Road too and Wooddale Road. Uh, but we do have Irving Park Road being redone in the not-too-distant future. We have the water main improvement that we have to do. Uh, that's tying into, you know, Thorndale thing, the vision plan. All these things are, uh, tied to each other. I mean, we, we need to get this information to make a definitive decision of what we're going to do, which really affects all these other things that we have going on. I mean, so, it, it's really imperative that we get the information to be able to answer these questions and make the decision. If not forever, we're going to be going, you know, we should have done it, we should have done it, just like we should have teamed up with I T A S K to do a treatment plant with them, you know? Uh, we're always, you know, have the hindsight. This is the time to look forward and move on this. Thank you.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Again, I'm not trying to beat this thing in, in the ground not to do it. But I want this council to know, I will be coming back here again, that we pursued for this project. We better start thinking the whole entire Irving Park Road and Wooddale Road. Because I don't care how you look at, because when Thorndale comes on board, don't tell me that ain't going to be part of our authority coming off down, off of Thorndale Avenue there. And I'm just saying, I want this council to be able to commit to the, down the line for the whole entire Irving Park Road. Because that's really going to look borderline to borderline.
One of the problems to, to commit to it, and, and one of the things that I'm having a struggle with is the fact that we need these easements. If the owners of these properties don't give us the easement, then our project is dead. And then we've got, you know, thirty grand that we just spent money on. I don't know, is there any way that we can survey some of these people and find out if they would be willing to, to do this?
Dennis?
The easement, I, I think I heard Mike talk about, where's the easement? The easement again is along Wooddale Road, all the way down to essentially potter where our reconstruction limits are. So, all these residents or property owners here, if they would be open to the idea of ComEd acquiring a ten-foot easement from them.
Can we do, uh, a, a survey on that? Uh, you know, to, to see if these, at least, uh, property owners would be on board of that?
I mean, I think we, we, we could do that, but, um, I think normally the process would be, if you want to move forward with it, we would start that process after you committed to that.
Well, I mean, I, I want to move forward on it, but then if we say yes, let's move forward on it. And we've got five property owners that say, no, you're not going to get my easement, then, then where are we at?
I, I think you'd run that risk whether you do it now or you do it later. Um, and they could tell, someone could say, fine now, but change your mind later as well. So, that's a difficult thing to pin down with any certainty at this point.
Alderman Jacob.
A couple of quick questions. Um, number one, as far as the reliability, let's say we do bury the lines and that's what we decide to do down the road. And there is a power outage and they determine it's underground, how easy is it to find that problem?
Go ahead, Rich.
Work with an electric utility, you may, may or may not know that, uh, it doesn't make a difference. You, you attach to two ends and you determine where the fault is. And there's devices that they use to find the fault in the cable. Cable tends to not be a problem underground, uh, for a very, very long time. There is no susceptibility to trees or anything like the picture showed. I mean, I, I think Dennis and I captured the essence of that in that picture. That's why you have outages, nine times out of ten, because something's fallen on an above-ground cable.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
It's not just one person that doesn't, you just have one person that could say, no, no easement, and you're done. I don't think we have the authority of saying quick take either on a project like this either.
Right, I agree. I, I think.
I mean, you know, by the time that you do the project, the house might be sold and the new people say, nope. So, I mean, even if you did a survey today.
Well, right, like they said, if you, somebody says yes, and then like you said, somebody moves, then where are we?
I mean, look at the fifty-three, they, they did an easement down fifty-three.
Yeah.
And then they had a, state had to come up with more money to buy property, so.
Alderman Winger.
How did Addison bury their lines on Lake Street? Because it was similar, correct, that they had the lines and, and they buried them? So, did, how did they get their easements, you know? Do, do we know? I don't know how we know.
I believe before that, when I talked to them over there, is the old mayor, well, he says what happened is they got the easement clearance before they even moved forward with everything. That's how they got the.
Well, maybe someone can, uh, can find out how Addison got all the clearances from the easements. Um, you know, I mean, I'm just having trouble spending the thirty thousand and then having this thing shelved again because we have property owners that won't give us, uh, the easement. Go ahead, Jeff.
If Dennis and, and H R Green need to proceed to keep this project on track, you know, within the next couple of weeks, I can assure you, whatever easements we're going to need to acquire, any, uh, assurances ahead of time, you, you're looking at a lot of time. Because you're going to get attorneys involved, you're going to get, it's, it's, you're going to delay the project getting all those assurances ahead of time. I guarantee you that.
Alderman Woods.
Yeah, the attorneys would be more than thirty thousand dollars. I try to answer the question. I, I understand your, your concern, but we asked them to do this. This was our idea, our plan, and this is the next logical progressive step in that plan. We need to take it. Obviously, we have to address those issues. Uh, going back to Addison, uh, if they got them before or if they.